Being ordered seven oh two.
Recording in progress.
Give these rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just checking is the audio. And we will start with the recognition of three Eagle Scouts. I saw two here, but the third.
Yep.
No perfect title. I hope I get the pronunciation right. James Dillon, Graham Culver, and Christopher Vitale. Are you ready?
Okay, we're close.
Graham Caper. Excellent. So the three scouts want to come up front and just, there were two chairs and then you have a third.
Oh, sorry, that's my desk.
And maybe we could start with Albeck, James. Just a quick introduction of yourself and just tell us a little bit about your project. The audio should get picked up by you, the microphone is in here, so if you'll come in loud if there are. If there's anything here, just let us know.
I'm James. I just got my Eagle Scout. I was the last Eagle of 2023 for the Division. I got, I finished all the requirements two days before my 18th birthday, so right at the end. That's always good. My project was building folding cables in the changing rooms in the Performing Arts Center. I.
These are your pictures right here, are they?
Yes.
That was very successful because not only did it work and it was, you know, problem solving, but I also got to use them and I got to see how people use them. And I got to hear a lot of feedback from people saying, I mean, these are great add-ons to the room. Everybody really enjoyed it, especially everybody in Masters. So how's it?
Excellent. Move on, next one.
Hi, I'm Chris Vitale. I also just recently got my Eagle Scout rank. So for my project, I created a buddy bench for the North Reading Bachelor School. And when I was researching my program, my project, I noticed that the hood and the little school both had buddy benches in the playground, but the bachelor didn't. So I recommended that and I said that we're gonna get the funds to put one together. We're gonna assemble it, we're gonna put it in. And it was great. We got, we got all the money we needed. We got the best bench possible. We all got together in the morning and put it together. And we donated a couple of books in that picture to the library and to the kindergarten to teach about what the bench is for.
What is the bench for?
So, yeah, so a buddy bench is meant to almost combat like loneliness and bullying with the child. So if a child feels left out, if they don't have anyone to play with or just wanna like meet some new people, they sit down at that bench and what it's supposed to do is children are supposed to walk up to the bench, see a kid sitting there and ask them to like join them, like, do you wanna play with me? Something like that.
Very nice. Fantastic, excellent.
I'm Graham Caper. I've also just recently received my Eagle Scout. For my project, I built boxes for the church nursery, which were able to hold all the toys that were just outside, laying out, so people would trip on them. So I was able to build boxes and store them away, so no one tripped on them and they'd last longer now. No damage from the elements. For our fundraiser, I did a car wash and they turned out to be a lot more expensive than I thought they were, so I had to go back and do more fundraising. And, yeah, finished that off pretty well.
Excellent. Congratulations. We have a presentation, we have the three certificates up there.
I'll take a comment first, but again, Mr. Walner.
I'll just say, I only made it this far as, was it first class stuff? You just gotta get the signal and everything. I discovered girls and I was done, so. But I give you a lot of credit because I know it's really hard to get all the way to be a Girl Scout. It's really, it's a major amount of effort. All those merit badges I see in your sash there, it takes a lot during those and I was nowhere I can handle. So I respect anybody who does it, so congratulations. I'm doing some meaningful projects for the town and hopefully you can tell the next generation that's coming in that the Swan Pond is gonna be some help as well. If you wanna do signage and things like that, we're gonna be needing help from the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts to make it happen. So congratulations, great job. You know, this is a good leading indicator of what kind of people we're gonna bring in the future. And, you know, those scouts really, really works. Be prepared is one of my mantras as well.
Charles?
Yeah, I commend all of you. It's just inspirational to see you come before us and show us what you've done to help the community. I was a Girl Scout, I was a Girl Scout leader, I have the highest respect for the Scouts. My, I too, my mantra too is be prepared. I use it all the time. So, thank you. Thank you for hanging in there. Thank you for the time and effort. A lot of good people come out of the scouting. They really do. One of them sitting right over there, the town administrator. A prime example. So thank you very much for what you've done.
Massey?
And just to echo my colleagues, quality work as well. Great job. A lot of entrepreneurial energy as well, so. Really great to help the community jump in, fundraise yourself, put it together yourself, go back for fundraising, as you said, because you always have to. But no, quality work too and thanks helping the community. Great work, appreciate it.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, I, it's great to be handy, but it's great to be handy for a good cause. I go to bread and lumber and they laugh at me and my questions that are like, I can't believe you made it this far in life. So please see this. There, it's great. And every year, you know, it's, we honor a group and it's just a creativity of how many different things you can do. I think I've seen the same thing twice, which is great. It just shows that it's, if you look for it, there's a lot you can do for your community and for yourself. You just have to sometimes look a little, you know, a little harder. So, no, that's, that's definitely great and, you know, congratulations again. So, we'll present the certificates.
Yeah, if we had a phone over you and then we can.
Yeah. I'll go one by one and then we'll all go up together. Certificate of recognition. The town of North Reading is honored to present the certificate as an expression of its high regard to Jane Dillon upon its attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, as member of the Boy Scouts of America and to extend a personal thank you for the community service work performed in achieving this honor. And also, another certificate of recognition. The town of North Reading is honored to present this certificate as an expression of its high regard to Christopher Vitale upon its attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, as member of the Boy Scouts of America and to extend a personal thank you for the community service work performed in achieving this honor. Finally, another certificate of recognition. The town of North Reading is honored to present the certificate as an expression of its high regard to Graham Culver upon its attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, as member of the Boy Scouts of America and to extend a personal thank you for the community service work performed in achieving this honor.
Give me the three scouts right in the middle there. Have you guys stand right in front of the town seal later and then we'll stand behind you. You can just hold your certificate up so we can catch them.
Can you move the.
Yeah, I was feeling very.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay.
Aw, you're gonna miss all the fun.
Thank you, guys. Good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Should I go move my card now?
So we're gonna do board member reports, all the new business together. Please, please keep in mind that there could be a game clinching championship game because the chair is keeping a diet of luck. So, I will start with the owner.
Yeah, just briefly, if you happen to be in the Rockland Pond area on Thursday, please don't use it. It's, we're doing fan board treating and so the more the water is second, the better it is, just for one day. So try to avoid that. And then the Sustainability Committee and the Green Alliance Committee got together to do a cleanup two weeks ago amongst some high school people. Not to get into it too much, but they basically worked around the town common, did a substantial inventory of all the things they found. Everything was plastic. And so they're, and I think Michael received this, TA received this information. He's gonna work with Joe Preese to see if he can do things to try to prevent pollution from being there as opposed to just picking it up. So that happened then. And then I think for new business, I think I have like, ever since the town meeting, I've had a number of citizens come to me with different ideas that they have. Apparently we kicked off a lot of ideas. I think we're at the point where we need to have a strategy meeting like we've done in the past. And I think we should probably do that sooner than later.
I agree.
Because there's just, you know, I'm looking at the liaison list and everything else like that. I think it'd be good to organize that.
So maybe we can, we can choose a day when Mr. O'Leary is back.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's time to do that and kind of get back on track. A lot of decisions have been made. It's good for us to kind of think long-term.
And, Mrs. Gilberto, can you give a very brief just description of what the strategy meetings are for? So Mr. Massey knows what we're doing, please.
Sure, sure. So generally, on an annual basis, the board is met in public meetings, but it's more designed to be a workshop style where we update the strategic plan that's posted in the town website. We, we cut this erupted during the pandemic and responding to that. And then for a variety of reasons, it's been difficult to try to reengage that, but I think the timing is certainly good for that. Mrs. Gonzalez and I had ongoing conversations while she was chair about how important it was, but there were several factors above, things that have not been decided that I think make it easier to prioritize it as a woman and a kid. So we usually could buy dinner for the women, so it's, it would've been settled.
I'll just add, also, one of the big things I got was from the town meeting. Rachel Fisher, who talked to a number of parents, feels that we should change our bylaw as far as that 25-person thing. So she did a little research, came back to us and was looking to start with the select board to do it first. And it'd be a bylaw, so it'd be a big change, but, you know, I'm sorry, it'd be a legislative charter, county charter, excuse me. So it'd be a big change, but I think that's one of the things that we should be talking about.
What is the change that she's proposing?
She, she, she's, instead of it just being the number of people, it would be a percentage of the people who attended.
A percentage?
Yeah. And she has various towns that have various percentages. So that way it'd be a little bit more, you wouldn't have, I don't wanna say if it's right or wrong because I don't understand it well enough, but you wouldn't have 25 people deciding for 800 people what should happen. You know, it should be a little bit more relative, which kind of makes sense. But that's something for us to talk about. But any, for the, everybody's information, changing the town charter is like a big deal. So just not a flip the switch. All right, thank you.
That's it. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I don't have a lot. The Community Impact Team is meeting actually tonight at the school committee to present their core values to the school committee. They usually will follow up with us. I'm sure that Amy will be reaching out to us to present that to us also. Other than that, I don't know.
Mr. Massey?
Just wanna say congratulations to the seniors of North Reading High School graduating for the class of 2024, as well as all the other students in town that may not go to North Reading High School. Some of their best years of your life, and I'm sure some of us may think back to our high school years and how much fun we had. It's scary not to know it at the time. But I wish these kids nothing but a fun and a safe summer, especially on the roads. Drive defensively. And all the sustained success in the world and to the parents. I know parents put a lot of hard work and effort into their children's success, so kudos to you as well. Thank you.
What interesting, interesting is that what you mentioned on the change for the bylaw and what I was thinking and then some pertinent information I got from Mr. Gilbert just today is that at town meeting, I was told that a lot of communities and, you know, I didn't get to read this whole thing, but I read a little bit, but it seems that electronic voting practices might make that a moot point where we're, we're gonna explore what the costs are to rent versus own. I mean, if you're gonna use them a lot, you can use them for every vote, but then there's no more, there's no more yelling, there's no more standing, there's no more paper. It's just every vote, you click and you call it a day. And that should not only speed things up, but I feel like, I think a lot of tension and boil, and blood boils when delays. First the voice, then the hand, then the, so I feel like if you can, now that we have this great technology, it doesn't even seem like it's that like new. I think, I think that's something where we can even rather than go through the whole process of a town charter change, that just might be something that, because it seems like, from this thing I was sent, it looks like 70 communities have adopted it. So, I mean, I don't, I don't see how this doesn't go statewide. I mean, it's just, and hopefully, you know, maybe, maybe there can be some state money. Although I don't think that, I don't think the cost is exorbitant for what you get. I mean, for what, I mean, this is just a quick, like, you know, move to question, vote, thank you for playing, next, which is definitely up my alley. So, and that's, yep, that's all I got. Oh, Mr. Gilberto?
Just to add, so it's actually a bylaw change rather than a charter change.
Oh, I thought it was a charter change.
So it looks just in the bylaws of that 25 folks that you will stand for.
A paper ballot. That looks to be a bylaw provision, so that, that's one avenue we can look, that might be a little more quick to address. You know, I will just say, you know, there's a model out there. I think when you get into town meeting, to change is the way town meeting operates. I think we certainly wanna be inclusive in the community in terms of a broad range of perspectives rather than just imposing something. If it were a charter change, you might have a charter commission or something like that. It's not, but we may wanna consider how we, how, how we oversee that.
So, if you give me five seconds, I'm calling you a public comment. See, kill two birds with one stone. Isn't that nice? We're gonna move on to public comment. Gilberto?
Yeah, you mentioned town charter and for a number of years, I suggested that we need a charter review committee to review the town charter. The last, it should be reviewed every 10 years. The last time it was reviewed, it was very lightweight, what, we changed the name of the select board from, from the Board of Select and things like that, but it wasn't a full review. And so I would hope that sometime over the next six, twelve months, the people will consider setting up a charter review committee. Takes about a year to review the charter.
Anyone, anyone else wanna speak?
Kevin Mackey, Adam Streese. Since we're actually talking about the town charter, I'm not sure if there's a place to say it, but also the move to the question, I think was, it could be an issue. Because actually, on the two articles for the seniors, I thought they were notebringers to vote yes. But as the discussion went on, I don't feel I made an educated yes, or it was actually best for our seniors on the second one. And I believe someone went, someone went to move to the question and I don't feel I had enough information to make an educated yes. So I don't know if that could be part of the town charter or just, this is my thoughts on just since we're talking about the town charter and town meeting. That was my, that was one of my issues when I was at the town meeting, so.
Thank you.
Eleven.
Anyone else? Anyone online, Mr. Gilberto?
I'm not seeing anybody.
All right. Next.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Next up is a license, a common victual license for North Reading Sub LLC doing business as Subway at 4 Lowell Road. It looks like, sir, are you the petitioner? Are you the applicant?
I'm there.
You're the applicant, yes. Excellent. Okay, oh, great, thank you. Is it Shriya?
No, that's my daughter.
Your daughter, okay.
Yeah, that's one of the.
You're, is it Ranga?
Ranga, yeah.
Okay, excellent, great, thank you. So thanks for joining us tonight. I will tell you that the, the application came into us a few weeks back. We did encounter some issues with regard to compliance and some building and fire code issues that ultimately the owner did comply with. So we are recommending that the license be granted for the establishment. I believe you've sort of taken over the operation of the place at this point?
Yes.
I know a good amount of the businesses take out, but they do have a few seats, tables and seats inside which require a common victual license. So there were some challenges, but they did come into compliance, I think, today. This morning, we were notified, which is certainly a good thing. But just, we'd encourage you when the fire department, building department's asking to make sure we're responding to what their requests are quickly.
We took over the location like really last month and we inherited a lot of the issues that came with it and it took us time, time to kind of get into all the work and ultimately I think it got done and approved this morning. So it was, it has been probably a month since we took over and it was a lot of work to kind of get it done, but it got approved this morning.
Great, thank you, we appreciate that. So we're recommending approval.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve following common victual license to expire December 31st, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. North Reading Sub DBA Subway located at 4 Lowell Road.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
Just wish you good success.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We're excited to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All who's in favor? I have.
Thank you for the thank.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Um. We're gonna move on.
Mr. Chairman, through you, before the board is a proclamation for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer plus Pride Month. The template that you see in front of you, I believe, came from work done by Mr. Walner, Mrs. Mandy Pelley, a few years back. That's been. Yeah, so I did the first one and then she modified it last year. Okay, and we tried to keep. She knows how to wordsmith, so we'll go with her. And we kept those updates, but for, we made sure that we had plus on it because I know that that was left off last year, so we haven't updated. I'm sorry?
In the I.
Is there an I in it?
There's an I, no.
Okay.
Well, there's an I in this, not in this.
Okay.
Definitely an I.
That's probably most updated.
Yes.
And there's a motion that's been prepared.
So, we're reading the discussion. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and/or questioning intersex, asexual, two-spirit in the countless affirmative ways in which people choose to self-identify Pride Month proclamation. Whereas we recognize you in this Pride Month throughout the United States and the world, we are reminded of what makes our community great. Our remarkable capacity to accept and embrace the lives of others regardless of our differences. In this regard, we stand together with the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community as they declare their pride in who they are and whom they love. And LGDBQI-plus community has worked tirelessly for respecting equality and their right to exist while there has been remarkable progress towards acceptance and equality in recent years. The lives of other, wait, I lost my train of thought. Members of the LBG2Q-plus community still face unacceptable level of discrimination. We must push back against those who threaten LGTBQI-plus people and we must continue to make the case that all human beings share something fundamental in common, all of us who wanna love and be loved. Therefore, be it resolved, we are proud to support our LGTBQI-plus, mildly based, community's right to live their lives out loud. As we celebrate pride, we must continue to demand equal rights for all. Therefore, it is further resolved that select board members do hereby proclaim June to be Pride Month for the LGTBQI-plus community in North Reading. And therefore, it is further resolved, we encourage all residents to celebrate our proud and diverse LGTBQI-plus community through a parade declaration of moral support that reflects well on our town and support of our LGTBQI-plus neighbors. And we recognize LGDBQI-plus residents who is influential and lastly contributions to our neighborhoods that made North Reading a vibrant community in which to live, work, and play. It's a mouthful. It's a mouthful.
That's a different version than I have here, but that's pretty close.
Discussion.
I'll just say, you know, we're reaching out to the people who feel alone. That's what this is really about. It's just, you know, especially kids who are in high school, kids who are in college, they're young, they're just getting started. They're just learning, they're not alone. And that's the most important thing, I think, that is. And, and also the Pride Parade is this, like, it's the third annual one, I believe, and it's this Sunday. And if you wanna be in the parade, just get there around 11:00. The parade's at 12:00 and it goes till 3:00 o'clock. After they circle around, around 12:45, you know, they have barbecue and stuff like that. So please come out and support your community. Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I have a lot to say. I've wrestled with this. I've wrestled with this for a couple of weeks now. So, when this proclamation was originally, three years ago, brought forward, I voted no on the basis that the veterans did not have them on and I will put no one before the veterans. So, the following year, last year, I voted yes happily. Have no problem, you know, go enjoy it and have a great time. Until I saw an advertisement, no, last year, two of my board members in their reports talked about a drag queen that danced in the gazebo. So I had issue with that. The issue I have with that is not the drag queen, it's adult entertainment. I've been to the shows. They're, they can be a lot of fun. It's a choice that people make and I don't believe that it belongs in a public park where there are families and children who may not want to be exposed to that. I don't think it's the appropriate place for it. And this year, I saw that now there are three drag queens that are going to dance in the gazebo. I have a real issue with the, the time and place. There are other options. There are places that can be donated. It should be something that people choose to go into, to choose to go see. I don't think it should be in a public park where people are bringing their children and maybe side-swiped, not expecting to have to have that conversation. I think that should be a choice. I don't think it should be publicly done. It's a, it's an adult entertainment as well as a resort. And I love that they do the car parade. I love all the things they do, but I don't agree with the pub, the, the time and the place of the drag queen show. So I was going to say no to the proclamation, but someone got my ear and talked to me about, and then I just confirmed with Mr. Walner because the, the person who puts this all together, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't the person that brought forth the proclamation. I wanted, I'm going to separate the two because the community shouldn't be punished for a bad decision someone else is making as far as I'm concerned. So I will support the proclamation, but I needed to speak out about, about the drag queen show in the public park during the day.
Massey?
I don't have much, like, sort of agree with Mrs. Gonzalez, the fact of what it is in, in a public park, but other than that, I don't have, I don't have many comments.
So, I think the first time this came up years ago, I was, you know, it may have been new to North Reading, but with me, like, where I grew up and where I went to, it was just, you just didn't think about it, because you had friends of all persuasions, especially I went to Boston University where it's huge, like, you meet everybody, and I meet everybody. But I agree that I want to separate it, because we need to support this community. However, there's appropriateness, and not just with that, in general. You know, you say time and place, I'll say that, um, I know that there's a lot of people who support this and want to be part of it who are not going for that one reason, on all sides. So, I, I think that's a shame, because like, I feel like, you're right, uh, you stand in solidarity, like, it shows, like, you know, so, um, and again, I just remind everyone, no matter what you're doing in North Reading, just always think about, you know, if you even have to question it a second, it's probably not appropriate. You know, just 'cause, well, that, that's how I learned it. It's like, it's kind of like, you know, if you got a question taken at Left onto North Street from Central, you probably shouldn't do it. You know, so, it, it, it's just, it's kind of not to minimize it, but it's something like that, so. But I am in support of it, like I've been every year, 'cause I think it, it is important that, um, you know, they know we're with them. You know?
It's the most important part.
And that, and that's the most important thing, and I think that's what everyone here is saying. Everyone understands that these, these other things going on is not the message. The message is much bigger than, you know, whatever is gonna happen somewhere that, you know, whether or not it's appropriate, so. Can I have a motion?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim that June 2024 be lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer plus Pride Month in your reading proclamation.
Kind of get ahead of myself, sorry. I already read it, yeah, so.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Seagull, we're, this is...
Mr. Larry is probably...
We are just whipping, it's gonna be Mr. Larry's fault that we are done too real.
If my timing is correct, in weddings in Italy, they probably just finished a kid course, and he's gotta watch those stairs in Sorrento. He's at his, so everybody doesn't know, he's at his, uh, son's wedding, right, roughly.
Me too. I think we should have all been invited, but it's besides the point.
Then we're gonna have this meeting, I too could have promoted. We're getting ahead of ourselves. Wow.
Can't do water.
We can't do water yet.
Wow.
Nine.
Look at that.
Okay, we're gonna, um, uh, Mr. Massey, we're gonna move to number nine, and, you know, and this is the, um, this is the vote to get that exemption for what was voted in, and correct, Mr. Gilberto?
That's correct, I can get a brief, brief description.
Yeah, please.
This is a, basically a procedural vote for the board to formally file the home rule petition that was approved at town meeting last Tuesday night. The legislature asks for some documentation, generally a certified copy of the vote at town meeting, which the town clerk provided us, I think, today. Just sort of belt and suspend as we provide them a copy of this vote, so, assuming a favorable vote, we would ask, um, Mr. Massey as the clerk to sign, basically with something that certifies that the vote was taken here tonight, and I believe Representative Jones is gonna come pick it up tomorrow morning to back up, uh, the legislation, which I think he may have already filed last week electronically. So, um, we have a motion, and we'd encourage the board to vote for it.
Mr. Chairman, I move, I move to approve language for home rule petition approved under Article 18 of June 10, 2024 spring annual town meeting, and to direct the town administrators to submit the associated legislation to the state delegation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. All those in favor? Excuse me, further discussion?
Yeah, just some, just some housekeeping on the thing, and Michael, maybe you can help me out with this.
Sure.
On section two, it says excessive assets. We actually specified 275,000, but is it, is intended to be general that we can do our own rules?
I believe it's intended to be general, and then the select board is able to determine, um, what the eligibility rules are, is my recollection.
Okay.
So, it's written, you know, broadly based on the model that has been repeatedly approved at the legislative level, so.
So, more guidelines than anything else?
Sure.
Okay. And then on the back, section, section three, um, it talks about how we're going to be, you know, appropriating the tax levy on all residential taxpayers. Again, you know, but the intention is to also do that for the commercial? Do we need to put that in here? That they would also get a tax levy? Do we need to put that in? In anticipation, we're gonna be matching, so, commercial and residential.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is that the board was gonna seek to try to do that, perhaps through classification, through a classification hearing. Again, it's gonna be a projection, especially in that first year.
Right.
But, um, that is my understanding of the intention in terms of how to allocate that impact fairly amongst all, all taxpayers.
Okay, so we have that liberty.
So, so that's sort of separate from what's in there legislatively, and I believe, I believe the board's intent was to try to pursue that avenue rather than through the legislation itself.
Yeah, it just 'cause it says, the last thing it says is all residential taxpayers.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chairman, so this is sort of, this is, this is the model that we've seen approved at the legislative level, um, and my understanding, seeing from what the board provided us for feedback, was that the intention was to look at classification as a way to shift to the extent possible.
Okay.
But it'll be a projection, I mean, nonetheless.
Okay, great, thanks just for clarifying, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Anything further?
Just a little thing. I took a vote on this article. I just wanted to, uh, note that I, I feel I should have abstained in looking back hindsight 2020. I'm new to this. I didn't vote on any of the other articles but this one, uh, and many people thought that I voted for a lot of the other articles, which I certainly disagreed while I was running the petition, but, um, I am really happy. I saw a lot of compassion that night from the seniors, and, uh, extra passion from people following me to the park and all, but, um, I am really happy, uh, for the seniors that get the relief after an override that may come. I came in at a tough time, there's an override going on, there's an MBTA going on, there's a sewer, there's a fire station. I provided a little, little time to provide my opinion, um, so I apologize, and, um, next time I'll look into this more and I'll learn from my own mistake.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Gonzalez, you have anything on this?
No.
Neither do I. All those in favor?
Aye.
I keep committing this on, on the fast track.
Everybody get a chance to take a look at the liaison?
I'm looking at it right now.
Just a few housekeeping things can I bring up?
Yep.
The Energy Conservation Committee and the Recycling Committee, I think, are now the Sustainability Committee, so they're one.
Tell me I gave us for the same.
Should be one.
It's a great catch, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and, uh... Yeah, trans, and so when it comes to like Transportation Committee, the MBTA, and the Merrimack Valley, um, you know, Lil Hartman really has control of that. Now, I know officially I'm still on there, but part of her housekeeping should be, is that, I think we should just recognize she's doing this.
So, if that's the board intention, I would suggest that, you know, the next meeting we do a vote to appoint her as the, the voting member. That way she can walk in and cast votes on our behalf.
That's right.
And then, and Rick, if you, if she's doing a fantastic job doing it, I guess. You can do me a favor, if we're gonna do that, if you can just provide us a little background on that when we do it?
Oh, sure.
That'd be great, please.
Happy to do that. And I don't think I had any other housekeeping things on there.
In there?
Yeah, I think that was it, thank you.
Oh, Beasels?
Yeah.
No, just, just wanted to note, um, I'm happy to take more on. I was, so, pretty significantly low, I'm happy to take some more vote of, of my colleagues if you have been, I know a few of them I looked at were Building Commission, Land Utilization Committee, I know Rec Committee, I wanted to ask if that was similar to Parks and Rec.
Mr. Chairman, through you. So, yes, um, the Parks and Recreation Department has a committee that is very active in the oversight of the department, it's a Recreation Committee, Miss Owen is here, um, so, um, there's a few folks that are involved, you know, they, you know, the department head is working closely with the chair of the committee and representative of the committee, so, um, and they, they run as an enterprise, so they're financially, um, you know, a portion of what they do is independent, a portion is subsidized. But, yeah, they're working with the Parks and Recreation Department.
Yeah, I'm sure, show some of my colleagues, I've done these for a long time, some, but if you guys are, you know, taking a night's sleep on, leaving on, but if you wanna pass them off, I'm happy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I might take them up on that.
And I, um, well, I have nothing on that, so. Seven forty.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Chamber of Commerce is open, open position, I believe.
Was it?
That's not why I want to volunteer, but...
I think I was trying to get back to my, I'll get you updated on that, Mr. Gilberto. Thank you for the, for the catch. I, I...
Is it out here, or is it...
I don't know.
I think it is, it was kind of like...
It's up like 22 hours the last eight days, so, um...
I don't think I remember it, have we had somebody on that?
I think it's, they, they requested us to do that, you know, I've heard of various people doing it various times.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's an official, it's kind of an honorary...
That was honorary, when I said that, but, well, uh, well, yeah, I'll find somebody.
Because I, I know when I was EDC, they had the chamber president.
A rep.
That would be at the EDC, so you felt like you were working with them.
Yeah.
You know, but...
I know they have their board meetings once a month, and I think, last time I do it, Crisco was doing that.
Okay.
He was a part of it.
That's something easy enough, I can do, I mean, I got time, I don't have so much. Why don't we squeeze in legal bills, we have two minutes?
We got a little racing.
How was who's the liaison's, who, anything changed or just...
Yeah, things have changed.
I'll put them on the screen, gentle.
Oh.
Put them right up there.
But they might change again, with Mr. Massey.
You know, so you got me for land utilization, you know that.
You just expand that.
I'm on land utilization now. There you go. 'Cause you're still chair of that, right?
Is Recreation Parks and Rec?
Yes. So, I'll just go down there.
And I believe we, through, Mr. Chairman, I believe we posted to the website once it's finalized.
We do? Okay.
Go ahead.
And sure, Mr. Larry will be able to explain much better than anyone else, but the secondary school building committee, is that something that we're planning for something that's coming up, or are we closing out the whole project?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, it's exactly that, closing out the middle school, high school construction project. Committee has not had to meet in a, a number of, I think, probably years at this point. Once we finalize, close out with MSBA, I imagine we'll be able to formally disband the committee.
So, we'll get that updated as soon as possible, once it's finalized.
Yeah, the recreation...
Yes, yes.
That's all she wanted in the morning.
And youth services.
Oh, sorry about that.
Youth services?
Yes, no, youth service is Mr...
Is Rich.
It's the Walner.
Or still?
Yep.
Youth Service Abuse Coalition, what, what is that?
Uh, that's Amy Luckowitz and the Youth Substance Abuse Coalition.
Oh, okay.
It should say substance abuse, we'll correct that.
Okay, that, yeah, that's one of the...
We'll get it cleaned up. Now, we will have the hearing, I guess. Seven forty-six, not bad, though.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's a hearing notice that we have...
Oh, yes, thank you.
Either in the packet or a paper copy in front of you.
Meeting notice, water rate and capital plan hearing, in accordance with the requirements of sections 191-16 and 191-17 of the Code of North Reading, the North Reading Select Board and North Reading Water Commissioners will hold the annual water rate and water system capital plan hearing on Monday, June 17, 2024, at 7:45 PM in room 14 of the North Reading Town Hall.
Now, you can come on up if you want. How's it going? Matt Prince, Northern Water Superintendent. So, I have a small little presentation to kind of go ahead of the, the rate recommendation.
I'm just gonna ask you, I'd share that out if you can.
Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah. Yeah, just a little add for it. Great. All righty. Um, let's see, does this click with the spacebar? Ah, perfect. So, I just kind of wanted to update the, the budget for this year, kind of where things are at, um, before the rate recommendation, so, um, that's the rate that was, that was the, the budget that was approved at town meeting. Kind of a small increase, the biggest increase was the debt services. Everything else is kind of the standard increases, indirect costs, which are the costs that the Water Department pays throughout all of the other departments, that is, goes up two and a half percent every year. You're in a decent shape for the, 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 what you call it, the, um, the budget itself. Last year, I kind of showed what Andover's rates are. This is their projection that they started last year, and then are gonna go throughout the fiscal year 2029. So, you can see, they have some fairly large rate increases, which is driving our need to go up in rate increases. As the, uh, the plan that we have with Andover right now, in FY28, we go to a larger percentage of what we're paying now. Right now, we're about 74%, 75% of Andover's tier-one rate, because our rate can only go up two and a half percent every year. That plan expires in FY28, bringing us to 95% of Andover's tier-one rate. So, the plan that we set forth last year with a 6% raise, and followed this year by a, uh, I'll get to another 6% raise, is to stay on track with what Andover is increasing their rates at, so in FY28, we aren't hit with a 40% to 50% rate increase. So, this is the recommendation for this year, to cover the budgetary increases, pay debt services, and keep up with Andover's rate increases. The recommendation is to increase the water rates by 6, 6% across all three tiers. With this rate increase, moderate year of water usage, which is what we had last year, so if people kind of trying to think about what it is. Last year, we had a lot of hot weather with, followed by a lot of rainy weather, it was kind of off and on all year long, um, with a moderate, uh, rain year, and to also use 120,000 from the stabilization fund to offset, uh, increase higher than 6%. Like, I kind of explained, the largest fact, one of the largest factors into the rate increase is Andover's plan, over the next five years, their rate is to be five-plus percent, uh, every year. And then kind of jumped ahead from my notes and stuff like that, but, yeah, this is the, uh, the second bullet point is the two and a half percent, uh, the most, so we can go up every year until FY28, where then it goes to 95% run, 95% of their tier-one rate. So, this is what the rates would go to. Tier one, two, and three is the rate structure that we have. It's tiered based on consumption usage, uh, so those would be the three tiers. The administrative fee is gonna stay the same, that was one, something that we implemented quite a long time ago, uh, but there's no need to increase that. This is kind of something that, um, that we kind of set up a while ago of kind of showing where a rate increase would kind of hit people's wallets, 'cause it's usually where people kind of think and stuff. So, uh, low-volume user is the retired couple living by themselves, just the two of them, very minimum water usage, they're gonna look at an increase over the course of the entire year of about $12, so it's not all that much. The next one is probably, uh, a younger couple, kind of doing a little bit more things, watering flower beds, doing a little bit more stuff, you're gonna see around a $27 to $30 rate increase. That's with no outside watering usage. The next one I have here is moderate seasonal usage, so those are the people that kind of irrigate when you probably should, just a little bit in the morning, a little bit in the evening, when it's very dry. They're gonna see a rate increase of about 88 bucks for the course of the whole year. High seasonal usage, those are the ones that irrigate pretty much all summer long, they're gonna see a rate increase, or increase, um, by a, a little bit there, too. This is kind of historically... This is kind of historically, you can't see the bottom.
What about Mr. Studo's water rates? He stands alone.
Um, is there any, I'll just minimize it, I guess.
There you go.
A little hard to see, but that's kind of where we've been. So it's six percent there. Last year, we went at six percent. In years past, before Andover kind of had their plans and stuff like that, it was kind of either no rate increases or a two and a half percent rate increase. But like last year, we kind of set forth the plan to catch up with what Andover is currently doing. It's kind of everything. So like I said, the recommendation is six percent across all three tiers. And then we'll kind of take the plan continuation on to next year and kind of reassess. But the plan right now is to kind of go by six percent for the next couple of years to catch up and kind of reassess every year.
Mr. Gilberto?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Six percent per year, I know that sounds high and that gets people's attention, you know, just for folks who maybe weren't part of the conversations in the early to mid two thousand teens. We were looking at a scenario of multiple six to eight percent per year increases in order to go to the MWRA. We had a decision we had to make at that point. Really couldn't draw much more water out of the ground here in North Reading and either needed to find another source. We ultimately ended up going with determining to buy all of our water from Andover. At that time, we were paying the full rate for water, so now we get that ninety-five percent discount. And so really what you're looking at is, you know, catching up to a couple of years of lower cost to purchase water from Andover. And then debt service for a major project, which really has stabilized, I mean, knock on wood.
Right.
Stabilized things in terms of the performance of the system in recent years.
Yep.
Being able to recharge our tanks pretty quickly with upgraded infrastructure on, on Main Street and North Street mostly. So it was debt service that goes with that. It was about six million dollars worth of work. Three million of it was funded through a state grant, and the other three million is debt service that we're paying back. So those are really the things that are driving the increase. But we continue to be ahead of where we were projecting we would be if we had needed to go with the MWRA for all of our water, as we were looking at back in fiscal year twenty fourteen, fifteen. So, thank you.
I just have one question on one of our colleagues. Can you, can you just give a little, just tell us about, you know, the five dollar admin fee?
Yep.
What, why do we charge it?
Uh, it was a, as far as I can, it should, it was a assessment that they did, I want to say in the, the nineties sometime, to kind of, what I understand it is, is the, the cost associated with processing bills, printing, mailing, stuff like that, the kind of the fixed cost of getting a bill to a customer. It's one of those ones, it's everyone that gets a water bill gets it mailed to them. And then it's kind of just cost of postage, mailing, and all that kind of stuff.
Mr. Walder?
You asked my question about MWRAs, I was curious to know about that. Why is Andover raising it so high? Do they have new technology equipment?
They have a lot of capital plans that they plan on doing over the next couple of years as well. So they kind of have plans set forth and they're increasing their rates to kind of meet those demands of what their capital improvement plans are.
Gotcha. But we're still, I think the conclusion is we're still doing much better than MWRA.
Yes.
By some, by some, yeah, by substantial, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No, just confused about the Eastgate Liquor advertisement and the water rate.
Oh. Internal meeting package, just, hold there. Mr. Massey?
No, a quick question, that, that point that you're talking of, of MWRA, excuse me, when does that hit? When do we get to a point where we're now not in a better position than we are? You know what I mean? I think you mentioned, and we took Andover instead of MWRA up until a certain point, and then it starts to, the one with that point fee.
So even with Andover's reduced rate, I think it would still be better off than what MWA's rates are. And we do have a hundred-year agreement with Andover to keep Andover water and stuff like that, so. But, and, MWRAs, from my understanding, it goes up just as much as that would have incrementally each year and stuff like that, so.
Well, no, but the pandemic always good. See, it seems reasonable to us all, because you can see from your historical chart, too, that there's a lot of thought behind it. It isn't gradually going up. There's two-point-five percent, six percent, eight percent. There's no rate change, no rate change again. So I appreciate you guys' work, and thank you.
Gilberto? Yeah, I'll say, getting prepared and not just taking the two and a half, I think is important, just because I feel like, you know, it's something that came up with, you know, the trash fee, where there was really no increases for a few years, and then when it came all at once, it was like, well, it's because eventually you got to pay. So I, I agree on that. I mean, I agree even on that, what you have to do, but I definitely agree that gradual is better than, you know, all of a sudden, because it gives a false sense of rate.
Right. Yeah, things are great, and then.
Things are great until they're not great.
Yeah, until they're not.
It's really just a massive deferral.
Yeah. I don't, also, too, the Water Commission, they also met, they also recommend everything. I don't know if Vin wanted to say anything.
Mr. Ritchie, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, we were unanimous in, in voting the recommendation of the superintendent. And I, I just might add, I want to thank you. For the first time in four years, we actually had a quorum because of the appointment of Brett Schultz. It was his first meeting, so, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and we put the call out again. We still have two alternate spots available, so if someone's interested, you know, we only meet a couple of times a year. It's worthwhile to know what's going on, you know, across the state. The other thing I think that's worth noting is the use of water science.
Oh, yeah. So the town does have a, a customer-facing portal of Water Smart. It's a way that a customer, residents can log on and see what they're using for water usage. They can see their, their daily usage, their average usage, their quarterly usage. It can flag leak alerts, so if you have a running toilet, it will notify you after a couple of days of leaking. It's something that we did a lot of advertising for when we went with the new meters in two thousand eighteen. And it's kind of just been slowly incrementally, every quarter, we get about ten to twenty new residents signed up for it. It's something that I plan on doing this year, is to do a kind of another sort of like ad campaign, to let residents know that that is a resource that they can utilize to either help with water conservation or just to know what you're kind of using on a daily usage and stuff like that.
That's really good, because typically that, the bill is like, you know, it's like the box of chocolates, like, what am I going to get?
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, if you have, if you know what you're kind of doing day by day, month by month, you kind of, you're not surprised when you get a water bill, especially in the summertime months. So that's kind of what, after this month, after this summertime billing quarter, it's a lot of irrigation use, you're going to get a lot of people that are very surprised by how much water they irrigate with. So having the ability to log on and kind of see where you're using on a daily usage is definitely beneficial to the customers.
And it's free. You ask, they ask you a couple of questions, put in your account number, and it's, you know, real time.
Yeah, yeah.
So you have, you know, you have your water use, you know what your expected bill is, and then year to year, it compares how you're doing. So you're able to look and find leaks. So it's great, you know, I, I thought it was appropriate, given the increase, more, more interest. Only sixteen percent of the community is using it.
Well, that's, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Do you guys have a percentage of residents or homes that would be in tier one, or would be in tier two, and what would be in tier three?
Um, I, yes, I don't have it readily available right now, but yeah, no, we do, we can track by how much is used for each tier and stuff like that, so.
I'd just be interested, that'd be interesting information to know.
Yep.
And I get my water notification, you know, weekends is heavy use.
Oh, yeah.
It always pops up. Okay, Saturday, you did a little bit more than you usually do.
Right.
So I actually really appreciate it. And did catch a leaky toilet.
Perfect, yeah, that's great to catch them early.
Yeah, which is really good.
I do appreciate you not indirectly using my water bill like the past two years by certain superintendents. As an example of.
What's the example?
I did notice that.
Yeah. You know, as the example of the, you know, the fourth quadrant.
That's why I was asking why you didn't have it up.
Yeah, just so everybody knows why.
I think you should display your records for civic duty.
I, I can't, I've been told utility records are, I don't know, are they public?
Question.
They may not be.
I don't think so. I do see the previous owners, when you look at the Jacksville, it does show, so I think they are, so, but we're not to talk about that. So.
I'd just like to say, Matt, you had big shoes to step into, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I believe there is a motion, Chairman.
Yep, can I have a motion, please, Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve six percent increase in water use rates for bills issued after July one, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. All those in favor? Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-five water enterprise capital plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr.
I like Mr. O'Leary.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Just clarification, probably more for the benefit of Mr. Massey, just because it's your first year and going through. So you heard the motion. It's for billing effective July first. That billing ends up being for months that are ongoing right now. That's happened annually in that way, so if you hear from residents, you know, with a question about that, that's the custom and the rhythm that we've been in for billing purposes. It's tough to, you're going to cross over one fiscal year to the next at some point, no matter what you do. So if you do get questions about that, serve them to the water superintendent.
Right. Thank you, thanks.